Let me take this opportunity again since tomorrow is Veterans Day. I'm gonna ask that everybody rise for the veterans to do the pledge allegiance along with you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the ideal, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Osling. Osling, absent. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Johnson. Johnson, absent. Frausto.
Here.
Frausto, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Johansson.
Here.
Johansson, here. Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Kulos. Kulos, absent. Viera.
Here.
Viera, here. Valado. Valado, absent. Rita. Rita, absent. I present, Your Honor. Thank you very much. We move on to the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the City Council minutes for the date of October the 27th, 2015. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alden Donahue, second by Alden Pittman. Any questions? If not, roll call, please. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor. Thank you very much, Counsel.
Good evening. You are all welcome as observers to tonight's meeting. You are however reminded that the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the Council and the Mayor regarding city business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the Mayor approach the podium, announce your name and address. Please be advised comments may be limited to three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I could have your names, please, for the record.
Sure. I'm Annabelle Harless.
And I'm Ruth Greenwood.
Can you two get a picture of each other for my call?
Sure.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Do you need our address?
No.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Annabelle Harless and this is my colleague Ruth Greenwood. We're attorneys from the Chicago Law Committee for Civil Rights and we represent a group of Blue Island residents concerned about voting rights violations in the city. We sent Mayor Vargas and all City Council members a letter in mid-October communicating our clients' concerns about the constitutionality of the current board map. Since then, we have been communicating with the city's retained counsel, Michael Casper, to make sure that the city has a new constitutional board map put in place by January 2016 and that the city announces a public hearing schedule so Blue Island residents can be involved in the drawing of new board lines. We are encouraged to hear that the city is going to announce a new redistricting committee tonight to address the creation of a new constitutional city board map. We urge the city to announce and publicize the public hearing schedule as soon as possible so that our clients can ask fellow city residents to be involved in the process. On behalf of our clients, we look forward to working with the city in the implementation of a new city board map that complies with constitutional and Voting Act requirements. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm just gonna need your name and address.
Hello. My name is Emma Owens. I'm with Haven of Love Community Health Center. We're centered here in the Blue Island area and we're structured to provide services to at-risk youth. We're right now in the process of establishing our office here so we want to be able to make the community aware of what we're trying to do so that we can bring jobs and so forth to this community. And also, I wanted to also make aware that we will be having a function at the Salvation Army on the 21st of November where we'll be giving out turkeys and, a limited supply of course, but we'll be giving out turkeys and different giveaways to the Blue Island area as well as invitations from other communities. So we just wanted to bring awareness to what we're trying to do as well as uplift the community through our services.
Well, thank you very much. You're welcome to Blue Island.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And let's move on. To report of officials, I'll start off, Mr. Stevo.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. New codification book, manual 31-12, Director of Public Health and Safety, the job description. It's, the responsibilities are very vague. Just very vague. Be better if it was better outlined.
Okay. We'll make an order of it.
Mayor, we need to do more than make an order. We just need things getting done here. Going on is the position of police chief. Is this part of the codification, new codification? Is it listed there?
Could be, could not.
Could be, could not. But is it as of right now?
From understanding, yes.
When will we, when will you appoint a police chief?
When we get the money for it.
Well, you have the money for a safety director. Do you think a safety director's more important than a police chief?
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
Do you think a safety director's more important than a police chief?
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
The rec center, are there, in the new codification, are there rec center commissioners?
We're gonna look into that. Effectively, a special committee regarding that.
But you can't answer it now? Is there, no? How about, can you have Counsel answer the one who drafted it?
No, sir.
Mayor, are you taking suggestions on the codification book from the residents of Blue Island? Are there any?
It's been a committee, district.
Yeah, that's true, but...
And you've been present at those meetings.
Yeah, that's true, but he won't, he won't, he won't put people on the agenda. He refuses to put people on the agenda.
I don't know if that was part of the issue, but for certain, there's other issues that can be addressed?
Well, we need an ordinance, Mayor. We need a, about the conduct of the elected officials. We need, we need an ordinance saying that when we come up here and ask questions that the elected officials, if you will, answer us. We need, we need the Mayor to answer us. We need the aldermen to answer our queries. We need department heads to answer our queries. We need the city attorney to answer our queries, only then. And we need a...
And you must, anything else?
We need a, an ordinance for that, on the conduct of the elected. What is the status of the job, Mayor? Could we have a report from Treasurer Valado? Can you use a report? When will the city receive our money back?
Well, that's in the court systems.
And it was revealed that it's not part of the annual audit. Can you explain to us why it's not part of the annual audit?
You heard the audit. You are Mr. Casperick. That was previous administration.
Which you are part of, Mayor. This is the same administration which you are part of, which Treasurer Valado was part of.
You have the books and everything. That's why the audit was done.
So can you tell us what kind of deal was worked out?
No deal.
Well, why are we not part of job? Why are we not?
It wasn't in the interest of City of Blue Island at this time.
How much did that cost us?
A lot of money.
How about a dollar amount?
A lot of money.
Dollar amount?
A lot of money. Your time is almost up, Mr. Stevo. We got one more minute.
Mayor, in commemorating Veterans Day, which is tomorrow...
Yes, sir.
How about giving us residents the freedom of speech that these men and women fought and many of them died for?
We do. That's why you're here speaking in front of all of them.
Not limiting us, Mayor, but how about in commemoration of Veterans Day, how about honoring those men and women?
How about joining us when we do the pledge?
How about honoring them, Mayor, in all four corners of the world instead of limiting, limiting?
Thank you, Mr. Stevo. Anything else, sir?
The million dollars saved by the city, what account was this placed in?
Spread all over.
So where is it?
The city.
What happened to it?
It's there.
How was it spent?
Time's up, Mr. Stevo.
So you didn't save it. It's not anywhere here. It's not a reserve account. It's spent. It's gone. You just took it from here and then you spent it here, basically. I'm asking, especially requesting you placed on Chairman Frausto's Judiciary Committee at your next meeting. I'm expecting you to look up your old office and place me on your agenda, Alden Frausto.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevo.
Why, Mayor, why are we spending so much on legal? Why are we doing that, Mayor?
Move on to my report.
Mayor, why are we spending so much on legal when we got more important to spend our money on?
Ask yourself that question. Name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I am the Reverend Rod Reinhardt, pastor of St. Joseph's and St. Aidan's Episcopal Church at 2457 Oak Street, right here in Blue Island. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to stand and address the City Council of Blue Island. The public comment section of your meetings is one of the few moments when individual citizens have the right and the calling to address all of the leaders of our civil government as they are seated in meetings together. This is a wonderful moment in our civic life because every citizen knows that they have the right to say what they want to say to our governmental leaders so long as they remain within the boundaries of decency, helpfulness, and civilized good order. I have been coming to these City Council meetings for the last 11 years and I have always been shocked by the way that one of the members of our community continually asks obscure but accusatory questions of the Mayor or makes videotaped, mumbled, veiled personal accusations against the City Council members or implies some wrongdoing on the part of the city government. Now it is the right of this particular citizen to say anything he wants to say, but I believe that most of us would say that the majority of this particular citizen's attacks, questions, and implications are unfounded and hurtful statements based on some kind of unresolved personal problem or some veiled private vendetta. We know tonight that if one particular citizen continually violates the basic rules of decency, helpfulness, and good order, then that particular citizen cannot continue to do so and still feel that he is free from criticism and unkind responses. Eventually, it becomes the duty and the responsibility of other citizens to speak out and take action when that one particular individual person in our city continually and habitually abuses, misuses, and monopolizes the public comment section of our City Council meetings.
You have listened to me.
Especially for their own, their own private attacks and misguided harangues. Now, we all know who I'm talking about. I do not need to name any names, but I would like to encourage the responsible citizens of Blue Island to admonish our good friend, to get some kind of help for whatever personal struggles or private demons he is trying to drive away. And again, I encourage all of our citizens to speak out when they are offended by that kind of behavior. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Joe Gabriel, 12607 Artesia, Blue Island, lifelong resident. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to go on record to say in all my years of being at the City Council, that was the biggest crack I've ever heard.
Anyone else? Now we move on. Now we move on to my business regarding a resolution urging Illinois state lenders to release non-general fund revenues paid to local governments. It reads as follows: Whereas the State of Illinois has been operating without a fiscal year 2016 state budget since July 1st, 2015, and whereas the absence of a budget has resulted in state withholding over $150 million in state-owned to municipal governments for lack of appropriation authority, and whereas critical local services such as road construction, maintenance, and repair will remain unfunded until state leaders take action to release local motor fuel tax funds to municipalities, and whereas many municipalities rely on state distribution of local revenue to fund their 911 service centers, and without these funds, the effectiveness of emergency services to residents will be in peril, and whereas municipal budgets and basic services will be negatively impacted without the release of local use tax, video gaming fees, and casino, casino fees. Now there, the resolve that the Mayor of the City Council of City of Blue Island, and we call upon Governor and the General Assembly to take action to immediately release all non-general fund revenues owed to local governments. These funds include revenues from both motor fuel tax, wireless service emergency fund, use tax, local government video gaming distributed fund, and casino gaming. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be forwarded to the Governor, Controller, Senate President, Senate Minority Leader, House Speaker, the House Minority Leader, local legislators, and the Illinois Municipal League, and we're requesting that this be adopted today's date pursuant to the rule call as follows. On the motion by Alden Frausto, second by Alden, Slattery. Any questions? If not, roll call. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor. Thank you very much. We move on to the next. This is a resolution number 2015-035, a resolution opposing proposed extension of the Cook County amusement tax. It reads as follows: Whereas the Southwest Conference of Mayors is a body of newly-elected officials representing 21 communities in southwest suburban Cook County with a population in excess of 350,000 people, and whereas members of the Southwest Committee Conference of Mayors work diligently to efficiently and effectively operate their municipalities while providing necessary services to their residents, and whereas the members of the Southwest Conference of Mayors works together to keep the cost of running government down while providing all necessary services, and whereas the Southwest Conference of Mayors believes that local government should be used as an example of running a cost-efficient operation while providing all vital services to their residents, and whereas Cook County, Illinois has a projected $198.9 million budget hole for the fiscal year 2016, and whereas just months ago, the Cook County Board of Commissioners approved a penny on the dollar sales increase which is expected to generate $470 million, and whereas the Cook County Board President proposed a budget for the fiscal year 2016 which includes an extension of the county's 3% amusement tax to cable TV and recreational activities such as golf, bowling, and many for-profit sports leagues, and whereas families and businesses are already struggling to observe the sales tax increase recently passed by the Cook County Board of Commissioners, and whereas a proposed extension of the amusement tax is targeting some of the only available options of entertainment for some people, and whereas this proposed expansion of the amusement tax will impact greatly seniors, young families, low-income families, and whereas TV is a source for many low-income families as well as seniors as a resource of providing educational programming as well as critical news and public safety information, and whereas the proposed extension of the Cook County amusement tax will undoubtedly devastate the already hurting recreational activities such as golf and bowling, and whereas the proposed extension of the Cook County amusement tax will negatively impact job growth and economic development in Cook County, and whereas a proposed expansion of the Cook County amusement tax will yet be another financial burden on the residents and businesses of Cook County, and now therefore be a resolve that the Mayor and the City Council of, City of Blue Island, County of Cook, and State of Illinois strongly oppose the proposed extension of the Cook County amusement tax. Be it further resolved that the Mayor and the City Council of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois urge the Cook County Board of Commissioners to reconsider the financial well-being or consider the financial well-being of its residents, the businesses of Cook County when considering any future fee and tax proposals. Be it further resolved that the Mayor and the City Council of Blue Island, County of Cook, and State of Illinois strongly urge the members of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to oppose the proposed extension of the Cook County amusement tax. We're requesting this, this be adopted to today's date, November 10th, 2015. I need a motion. Motion by Alden Slattery, second by Alden Carr. Any questions? Roll call, please. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor. Thank you very much. I make this comment regarding the remapping, or the proposed remapping. My commitments since being elected as Mayor of the City of Blue Island is to be accountable and responsible to our citizens as well as to build a better Blue Island. Again, we heard that some citizens have brought forward an important issue by asking us to consider change of the boundaries for our aldermanic districts. I agree that we haven't waited too long to look at this issue. Again, we have been in office for the last almost 2 and 1/2 years, going to three years since it was last changed districts back in 1995. I'm announcing tonight that we are forming a special committee to consider redistricting our City Council seats. It is a time to look at how our community has changed in the last 20 years and ensure our council best reflects the makeup and the needs of its citizens. Thank you. Let me move on to the following. Since Veterans Day is tomorrow, and I don't know if you've seen this on Facebook, change one light to green to honor or support our veterans. Let me read the following. It's called "Green Light of That." Green Light of That is a campaign to, and I quote, "establish visible national support for our veterans by changing one light, one light to green." End of quote. According to the campaign, green is the color of hope and well-being. In the word "green light" is a term meaning approval of forward movement. The campaign urges all Americans, and I repeat, all Americans, to change one light bulb in your garage, behind your porch, in your living room, at your office, and to keep it on as a symbol of appreciation and support for all our veterans. And they're requesting also take a picture of your green light and post it on their social media using hashtag, and it's all together, "Green Light of That." I'm urging and supporting, requesting that we as citizens of this city do that or join forces with that. The other very important issue I wanted to bring up for our news is that starting next week, you're gonna see movement in the jewel property, the demolition of the jewel building. And you'll probably see that midweek, so I just want to inform the Council and the residents here and the residents who are listening and watching us on cable TV. That's all I have. Any bids? Yes, we need a motion for approval of CBVG Street Resurancing Bids. Need a motion by Alden Holly. You have a second, Alden. Donahue, any questions? Roll call. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor. Thank you very much. Any city perks business? No business, Your Honor. City Treasurer, please report.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Every officer received an end of month statement ending October 31st, 2015. Need a motion to approve?
Need a motion by Alden Donahue to have a second, by Alden Pittman. Any questions? If not, roll call, please. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Thompson.
Stained.
Thompson abstained. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Eight ayes, no, no, zero nays and one extension. Thank you very much. Anything else? City Attorney, no report. Before I forget, again, Veterans Day is tomorrow. From understanding, Mr. Clerk, there is an event tomorrow?
At Memorial Park at 11:00.
Memorial Park at 11:00. We expect everybody there who's off or not working, no excuses. Do it for a vet, thank a vet every single day. Committee reports, committee development committee.
No report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is Monday, November 16th at 7:00 p.m. here in City Council chambers.
Thank you very much. Any report on the finance committee?
No report, but our next meeting's gonna be this Thursday, November 12th at 5:30, at 5:30 here, November 12th.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
No report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is December 15th, 6 o'clock here in the East Danex.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
We met last week. I don't remember the report, or two weeks ago, but I don't remember the report. If anyone would like the draft version of the Snow Operations Guide, I could present that. Superintendent Posture did a really nice job putting that together and Director Hoff. It's really gonna help so we're all on the same wavelength, same wavelength in regards to snow fighting and snow removal in the city, so if you'd like a copy of the draft, it is a working document, we know. And our next meeting's gonna be next Wednesday here in the East Danex at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Since we've discussed it right now, weather, so everybody knows if you hear, supposed to see severe weather sign on its way here tomorrow night around this time. High winds, possibly even a tornado. Hopefully it doesn't arrive to us. Hopefully we don't wish to find anyone, but again, they're expecting that storm presence on the west coast heading towards us. Again, just so you're aware of it. Judiciary Committee?
No report, Your Honor. I do have one item on the agenda that I would like to put forth to the Council. It is an ordinance amending certain chapters and sections of Title I, III, and V of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Blue Island, County of Illinois. I'd like to put them in form of motion.
We have a motion. You have a second by Alden Piero. Any questions? Alden, go ahead.
I have a question regarding the Arts and Culture Committees, 3202, Section C-1. It's a Development Committee? Is that, is that supposed to be, or is it supposed to be the Arts and Council Committee?
It's the Arts and Cultural Committee.
I, I understand. I was just saying more in the, in the body of the paragraph. I don't know if that needs to be changed from the Development Committee to the Arts and Culture Committee.
The Development Committee is not...
But what I'm saying, Alden, is in, under Section 32 dot, dot, O2, Section C dash, number 1, it says the Development Committee. I think it's just a typo that needs to be clarified. So I'm asking for clarification.
Alden, we have a copy of the motions of your committee. I think it should just say the committee. Might be just a typo.
So I guess, I'm just reminding you, I gotta make sure.
So with that in mind, is the motion and the second concurred? Will we vote?
Yes, yes, it is. Yes, yes, it is the typo. Okay.
So we need a, it should be committee.
It should say Arts, Arts and Council Committee instead of saying the Development Committee, or Alderman's right now. Currently now.
Any other changes or any other comments regarding that? Alderman, go ahead.
Uh, under garbage, page six, fifty-ten, fees and charges, the next, that's in page five, but the next page says, under seniors, uh, I'm gonna ask a question about applications that have to be submitted to seniors who receive the discount for sanitation use. This is new. If you're a senior, you do not have to draw an application every year. This is new now. And when would that application, where would we get that application, and what point of the year would we have to submit that application?
That application will be available through the city clerk's office, and that will be when our yearly garbage contracts are used, is it June?
July.
January, June, July. And the reason for that is we wanna make sure that, that seniors in those households are receiving that, that discounted rate, um, and we wanna also make sure that households aren't abusing, you know, an incentive that's there for our seniors. So that, that's why that's in place. Sorry, I shouldn't be speaking into the mic, but it will be available through the city clerk's office.
And it will have to be submitted the first of the year.
We're gonna be discussing that at the next judiciary, because I'm, I'm gonna prepare a forum for the next judiciary meeting, and we're gonna go over that at the next meeting. There's several things, and some seniors are taking advantage of sanitation, but not the vehicle, some are just still in the vehicle, not realizing that you get the sanitation rate, so it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be helpful for seniors.
Yes, okay, good. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the Alderman? If not, uh, roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.